So at 7:00 PM. The Blue Ridge City Council will meet regular session at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, at the Blue Ridge Community Center located 200 West Tilton, Blue Ridge, Texas with the following items on the agenda for consideration and/or action. Item one, call to order and roll call. Trent Sissom.
Here.
Keith Chitwood.
Here.
David Apple.
Here.
Linda Brawley.
Here.
Wendy Manningly.
Here.
Rhonda Williams. Thank you. Item number two is prayer and pledges. And Keith Chitwood, which you can tell.
Down the, uh, break in the city council that they give us guidance and stuff. And do all searches we're gonna make the decisions.
I'd like to the next to the flag of the United States of America. It is very important for which states. One nation, and for God. Indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Honor the sacred and special. Pledge allegiance. Sacred and. Forgot to work y'all. Sorry. Yeah. Item number three is proclamation from Men's Health Month during the month of June and Men's Health Week, June 9th through June 15th, 2025. And as you know, proclamation for reading. Bear with me here. Proclamation from Men's Health Month, June 2025. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative health can play in prolonging their health span and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. Whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle or role mothers for their children and have happier, healthier children. Whereas Men's Health Network works for Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a social campaign and to help educate men, boys, and other families about the importance of positive health attitudes, preventative health practices. And whereas the Men's Health Month website has been established at www.meanshealthmonth.org and features resources, proclamations, and information about awareness, events, and activities, including Wear Blue for Men's Health. And whereas Blue Ridge Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, and prostate, tis good for, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of this city are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore, I, Rhonda Williams, bear the city of Blue Ridge to hereby proclaim June 2025 as Men's Health Month in Blue Ridge, Texas, and encourage all our citizens to pursue and pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. Have a signed proclamation. We're gonna actually have a change on the agenda. Item number four is actually gonna be from the Blue Ridge rodeo. Are we here? You can speak. Here we go. All right. Sorry about that. So John of the Blue Ridge rodeo will be coming up soon, and so they were likely getting this information to us, but we had added it to our agenda for the parade. So it was presented by Lori Bowlen. Is she here? Not. Jason, you want to speak on behalf of the riding club?
We're just looking for permission from the council to approve the parade route as well as maybe approving some control of some streets. Uh, to provide more safety for citizens that are going to do the parade. And probably gonna implement the sheriff's office volunteers to assist with the travel control. That's all I'll hold up.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions regarding this?
What option are they looking at? What's that done? One or four?
I'm sorry?
What option are they looking at doing?
Which option? One or four? I know that. Jason, do you know? They have two different options here on which way they wanna do the right route. Let me get it loaded. It is just like. Yeah, they would just able to get it. Brent needs one here. Take this. Figures. Tell us what they're looking at.
I believe option number four is what we were looking at. To not have those tight turns as an option number one. Maybe get.
You guess that's probably an issue last year.
Yeah, it's hard to turn up here, so I was trying to get it a little wider. I think we come in and they even have to last little part of that here for our performance. Personally.
So what is option four looks like? I don't have.
Option four is coming down Main Street all the way down the main to Tilton. Upset business 78. Only get to get out. Like it. I like that option. Much better.
Set one, six. Yeah.
No, Main Street has, you know, car wash is business 78 on the main.
Okay. Anyone have any questions regarding that? Is everyone okay with that or?
I think Lori, when she came to turn it in, she said that she was gonna talk to everybody at the riding club and see which option would work best. So just, just let them know if you change your minds.
The last meeting I was at, I think it was number four, what we were trying to do. But that's gonna, um. See what comes out for us if we can even do it. I think this will be the part of.
And so are y'all gonna contact Colin County?
We'll take care of all the statistics.
Cause we can, we can handle the other parts, just, you know, it's just in Colin County. And I don't think I have a problem with it. They've always come before. And then we've had the businesses. And all been contacted, to my knowledge, and I know, I don't know why they're having a problem. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve this if there's not any questions for anyone.
Who's that number four?
Yes, he's number four.
Uh, make a motion to approve bottom of the four.
That's it. It's a, on favor. Four A, as we're gonna follow here. So consent agenda. All matters listed on the, under the consent agenda for discussion and possible actions are considered to be routine by the city council and require little or no deliberation. There will not be a separate discussion of these items and the consent agenda items will be enacted by one vote. If a council member expresses a desire to discuss a matter listed on the consent agenda, the item will be considered separately. A, discuss, approve, or disapprove the minutes for special session held May 13th, 2025. B, public works update. C, city financial report. D, fire department report. E, animal control report, which we do not have the animal control report. F, new permit report. And G is the runoff for utility billing. Any question? Oh, each of that maybe. I got a couple of questions about the public works, like being heard. Yeah, about the public works report. Okay. Is that something I should do separately with Joni or should it be done in the meeting? Is there a question regarding it's on, something that's on the report or? Yes. Okay. So now, the public works report. I noticed that it just says roadwork, ditch work. I mean, is there any way we can get more specifics as to what ditch work is?
So roadwork would be where they're out with the asphalt mix. Roadwork is gonna be where they're out with the, the bags of asphalt, filling ditches, I mean, filling potholes. And then the ditch work is normally what they do, especially in the spring and summer. They just kinda dig all of the weeds and dirt and kinda clean the entrances to the culverts. So there's not any backup. Did, did you, I mean, we can, I can have Brad make it more.
Make it more detailed. Yes. Okay. And I also had one question on the fixed water leak at Richard and South Business. Was that a service line or a main line repaired? Do you know? Sorry, where are you at? Fixed water leak at.
Oh, Richard and South Business. Uh. If nobody lost water, it was probably a service line. But it's on, it's, it, cause we only fix from the meter out. So we don't repair anything from the meter towards anybody's home. So it's not gonna be a private line.
Okay. And we can check that as well in the IT. I mean, Johnny can check with Brad and find out for sure and he's better, but you know. Okay. And then the last question I had was, uh, where it's put Millings on Hilltop, East Heap and South Marrow. Are those gravel roads or what?
I mean, Hilltop is a rockish road. Okay. Um, East Heap is, they are all, they're all, they're all the same. Yeah, they have the base and then it's pretty much rocky gravel.
Okay. Um, the only other question I had on the report was on the work orders. Um. I just wanted to know, are any of these meter, meter not reading rewired? Are these repeats? Uh, uh, I mean, have they happened before at these particular addresses or is there any way we track that?
So Crystal, our, our utility clerk is absolutely amazing. She has to meters. She gets a report every single day that's mailed to her from Zinner and gives her wire codes, leak codes. Uh, and it gives, it gives her everything. And if she sees anything on that report, she immediately sends down one of our guys to correct it. Because that's how we have saved hundreds and hundreds of volume dollars in lost water revenue because she is quick. I do not know personally if these are repeats because this is what Crystal handles, but I can ask her to add to this work order list if it's a, if it's a repeat.
Yes.
Nine times, yeah. Nine times out of 10, no, it's not because if she has to send them out more than once, she contacts Zinner, gets a whole new meter, and gets it replaced for free.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, the questions regarding items on the consent agenda. And again, we don't have the animal control report. So. No comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept that for eight.
Make a motion to approve.
Four A.
Four A.
I gave a new number, give it out. Okay, so Keith makes motion to approve four A. Do we have a second? I'll say a pledge. On our favor. Okay. Not close. Thank you. Item number five is public comment. Okay. Uh, first person on the list is Paula Isaacs. Now believe that microphone, see it's showing red, so you should be good.
Good evening. How are y'all tonight? Hopefully everybody's surviving all these storms, but the grass sure looks great. That's pretty green. Okay. Um, what I wanted to speak on is a couple of issues, um, that is on the agenda tonight. And, uh. One of the things that I think that needs to be addressed as soon as possible would be to start looking for a city administrator. And I don't know if y'all are planning to hire like a, um, an employment agency firm to vet those people because they need, whoever you do decide to hire, y'all need them vetted, you know, and it would be nice if they would just send the top candidates to you instead of you having to do all the vetting yourself. So I was just gonna suggest maybe an employment agency or something like that to look at candidates. Cause I think the problem, well, it's not a problem, but it kind of is, is we're gonna grow no matter what here in Blue Ridge. We're growing like crazy. Um, you know, everything from Princeton is spilling over to Blue Ridge and we've got more and more subdivisions being built here. So we need a city administrator that can oversee that, that has a lot of experience. So I think this is something that needs to really be something we need to focus on. Also forming a new planning and zoning committee. I know y'all are considering that, but I think that's super important because it would be nice to have multiple sets of eyes on these different contracts and, and talking with these developers so that you're not just relying on one person's opinion, but you have a lot of people that you can lean on to get information from on these developments. And, um, one other thing is, is I saw that the Mallory Park, uh, the public management contract is in your packet tonight because I read it. And I'm gonna ask that you table that completely. That's a lot of money, um, to spend on that park right now. And I think we need to wait until we get a city administrator hired before we spend that kind of money. Um, each of those people on that contract are getting anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to $275 an hour. And, um, those are some pretty high paying peoples, you know, people. And I'm sure that if we hire a city administrator, we would be looking to pay them as much as we paid our former, uh, city secretary. And I, it seems like I read somewhere that we were paying her about 80,000 a year. So I would think that we would have to pay at least 80,000 or more for, to attract a good city administrator to Blue Ridge. Um, let's see. A little housekeeping notes, I had mentioned this before a few months ago, but since our city secretary has retired, I want to make sure again that, that the login, computer login codes have been changed and that the keys to city hall have been returned. Just little housekeeping there. Cause anytime you lose, you know, a top employee, you need to make sure that you're, you're checking all those things. Thank you.
Thanks for having Camille Shan.
I just signed in.
Oh, okay. Hey, I don't have anyone else signed up. Would anybody else like to speak? Oh, go ahead. Is it Chris, correct?
Yeah. Chris Rogers, 406 West 7545. Um, talking about the bar ditch cleaning and everything. I know 545 is a state road, but they do not take care of the culverts once they're installed. Does that fall on the homeowners? Or does that fall back on y'all to keep that clean? Because both sides of my culvert.
545?
Yeah.
Text stop.
Text stop will not maintain ditches. That I know. Cause I have contacted them about my father-in-law's. Because after that last flood, the walk, you know where my house is. The water was literally about a foot away from that new pad I had laid during the summer.
Let me see if I can call.
I just wanna make sure it's cleared out and stuff.
Cause if we touch it, it's all constructed.
Yeah, I know.
So I don't wanna put my guys in that situation.
No, I don't want you to either. So I'm just saying from experience working with cities. And I just, I worked for Slana and I just had condos contact me about the ditch, you wrote in the way and their gas line was exposed. And they're like, do we come in and fix it or does text stop? Text stop's like, we take care of the pavement. That's it. So.
Let me see if I can.
You got it.
Call around.
All right. Thank you.
So you'll check on that and get back to the script. Hey. That's all that I have on this. Item number six. Receive, consider, and discuss presentation from David Shetman. With Hilltop Securities providing information about logic, local agreement, agreement, local government, best of all, to High Hill Savings Accounts for the city. Is he here? He, we're team leading, he is in a training seminar right now, so he is leading after the team. You got it? This is something you already spoke with him regarding.
Yes, he came and met me last, last month.
I know you guys spoke last week, so. Okay. I'll say it first. Do we need to turn off the light on that side? Or? So it's hard to see. I need to. Give me one second. I'll save. Move our, around the lights. I don't know if he can see us. We can't really see him that well, but. Or at least half, half on this side for the backside. There you go. Yeah, okay. Did we lose? No, he was trying to get his hands. Okay. So, right. That he doesn't have to. No, I don't. I tried. One does. Yeah. Cause it's a light that it's saving. You said. We're okay? Say, go ahead and talk. If even, no, for you guys. It's fine, thank you. See, we're trying to get your volume up. Paul. Keep talking. I'm sorry? Can you hear? Yeah. That's. That's. And it's awesome. Here, what? How is this article there? We're going to flash it up. Being just excited to finish up. You talked about. We're gonna. He also worked on. I don't know if there's a. They were asking. But that's. For it's. Put one of these. She already. He said, or. I was like, I must be. I don't know where he went. He's just working with the different. I'm sorry, y'all. Yeah. Well, that's, yes, okay. This one was. Thank you. Hey, we might see that. Thank you guys for our spirit. Really appreciate it all, H and A. I apologize for the tone background, uh, last second. Oh. I say, first, uh, again, thank you guys so much. Out of here with Hilltop Securities. Service, this whole, that's the thing. I'm seeing. That's the best. I would think really long, uh, just help you guys, basically, a debt. I specifically. Side and more specifically. That's inside. Uh, Nate and I would really feel seen together with the two of us. Um, for those who are aware, out here with what it is, that's the way this practice is. Uh, that's highly, specifically. So the only funds that we have in this whole city. What's that? Is, should we, um, would we just call it that here off speakerphone? Uh, yeah, we could do that. Let me get my phone. Could have called it. Hello? Put it easy. Hey, we moved on up, so, you know, we. Hey, we moved on up, so, you know, we used to not have microphones, we're getting better. So go ahead and do.
Okay. Um, do you have my bird contact?
Um, I've got it in my. Yeah, we should.
Can't look at the box out of the system.
Okay, yeah, I actually think Joey spoke to me. And then conversed about various things, so I think Joey may have some information. Kind of give some overview somewhat. But those. Hi, David.
Hey, can I have a little bit longer?
Alright, let's start over.
Perfect. Well, thank you guys once more. Um, I definitely, um, I really wish I could. Promise at some point I will definitely be there. Um, but again, thank you guys for your time. Um, I'm with Hilltop Securities. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the city currently works with Hilltop Securities. On the business advisory side with Nick Blush, uh, he just recently helped the city issue bond issuances. Um, I am on the asset management side and more specifically on the local government investment pools by the house. Um, for those of you who are not familiar with LJ. Um, essentially, pretty much every state in the United States has these local government investment pools. Um, Hilltop is one of a couple different firms that help the pool in Texas. Um, best way to describe how, what the pools are, is essentially a high-yielding money market or capital primitive. Um, that only cities, uh, counties and school districts are allowed to use. Um, so this is not for student, for retail, this is only for governmental activities. In order, important to note that all pools share, uh, first and foremost, the Florida State taxpayer fund. Uh, so preservation of capital is at the forefront. Uh, not many of principles can be lost, not many of principle has ever been. Uh, we've been co-finishing these pools alongside J V Morgan for almost thirty years now. Um, the public funded investment act of Texas was just specifically the bible. Uh, what all governmental entities in Texas are allowed to invest in. Uh, through and recommend that every governmental entity have at least one or two pools in their school pit. Uh, for diversification, for liquidity and for safety. Uh, the second characteristic is liquidity. It is a hundred percent liquid, as long as we get order to put money in or take money out before, for, plus, and for. You guys will have those funds, guy, in your tax account of your choice, uh, within the hour. Uh, third is that there's no minimum balances, there's no funding requirement. Uh, again, this is specifically related, um, for you guys to utilize anyways, like. Uh, whether you with bond monies or reserve monies or operating cash. And it completely has to all distract in what funds that what pretty cool. Um, I'm collecting business yesterday, Techstar is at four point three zero. And Logic is at four point four two. Uh, the two, the biggest difference, uh, between the pools, the only difference I should say, is the holdings. So Techstar only holds for revenue agencies and repurchase agreements. Um, so every security that hold is backed by the full faith and credit of the US government. And Logic holds A1, A1 partnership paper. So all that's just fancy words for saying that Techstar is the highest graded government debt. And Logic is the highest graded corporate debt. Um, I do always like to end with a couple, you know, long standing clients that we've had. Um, depending on whichever county I'm presenting it, uh, so in Coleman County, just a couple. Um, of our long standing pool clients would be the city of Fairview, Parkersville, Frisco, Hackberry, Joseph Dean, Lebon. Lucas, McKinney, Melissa, Prosper, Zach, the Weston. Um, you know, I, I, I go on to say the multitude of these because I, I want to make it clear that this is not just for large cities. Um, it's not just for small cities, it's again specifically created for all cities, no matter your size. Um, and again, I actually said it could be a benefit now, we're in the spirit of, if I understand you correctly, y'all are not earning anything. On your funds, which, um, is not good because we are in a very special interest rate environment right now. Where essentially the Fed Fund Rate, or another word, the risk free rate, is about four point two percent. Um, so even a sliver below that, um, it, it, it's not good. Long winded, I'm open for any questions you guys have, uh, and again, thank you so much.
I have a question. And I just want to make sure I've heard this right, did you say the principal cannot be lost or has not been lost? Currently?
So, the principal has not been lost ever, um, and the biggest and most important, uh, the, the first thing that the fund tries to achieve is preserve base of capital. Um, again, going back to Techstar, for example, every security is by the pool, which are treasuries, agencies, and repurchase agreement. Every, every security is backed by the full faith and credit of the US government. So it's the safest thing, the most conservative, quote unquote, investment out there. Um, you know, I like to bring up the example of FDIC insurance that your local bank. But, you know, every account has up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars in interest. Well, how does the bank, uh, uh, give you that insurance? What they do is they take your cash and they collateralize it with two assets. Well, FDIC insurance is not needed necessarily because it's a collateralized your cash. Holding a bucket of those treasuries, they're managed by a more difficult.
I think your question. Yes, my understanding, as of right now, we have like our four A account. It's not really making us any interest at all, it's got quite a large amount of money in there, so. If we could. Possibly move some of it over to be able to make some more interest rather than just sitting there, low bearing interest.
Do we have an idea of the monetary amount that we're thinking or is anything discussed?
Yeah, this is the first time it has been brought to us because Joey was reviewing all the accounts and things of that nature. And then, uh, he had reached out to us as well. And then they got to talk to me, so that's why she and I spoke, because it was a good idea to pick on this. For to see, because, you know, we have the money in the accounts, but the money is not making us anything, it's just sitting there, so at least it would be making us some more money to be able to use for other things as well. And then you had spoke with them as far as the, uh, liquidation, how quickly we get that before, things of that nature, so.
And the four A and like four A, four B, we have a revenue holding, a general holding, those are accounts that we don't spend down there all the time. So we can move those where they're making more interest, more making out. Without having to worry about, you know, automatic payments or checks, they're all coming out.
And of course, those would have to go before their boards to agree, because those are different monies, it's just, this was just a. Presentation for us so that, you know, we could actually reach back out to the four A board and four B boards and let them know it is an option, you know, and this is how it would improve, you know. Hopefully through increased funds, to be able to use those funds for other items as well.
Do they move the monies around to different entities or what you invest, say in bonds, it stays there forever? Or do they move it around?
Oh, it's a great question, so it is a fully liquid account, and the only way that's possible is if treasury decides a fund are liquid as well. So the WAM or the weighted average of thirty is one to seven days, again, that's just fantasy talk for, uh, any, any treasury or. Or any pieces of treasury that is bought by J V Morgan, if it's fun, has a, a thirty that is not exceeded seven days. But that not only goes to the safety of the pool, but it has that liquidity, the liquidity that you guys have. Um, so yeah, so two quarters, essentially, uh, the treasury that they want to buy, uh, that they just, they want to buy. Um, but it will never exceed a maturity of seven days.
So basically, it's not, do you have something? Now, the only question.
Can you give me an example of, say, the five hundred thousand dollars invested? How much that would cost us? The operating expenses?
Yeah, so you're asking if we put five hundred thousand dollars in there, what that would cost for the year?
Yes, please.
Definitely, so, uh, so Techstar, for example, is six basis points per year. So that's about, uh, that's about sixty dollars on a hundred thousand. Um, so if you just multiply sixty by five, that'd be about three hundred dollars per year. Uh, but again, you'd be earning about, you're earning well over four percent on those funds. Um, and one other thing I want to note, um, anytime I quote rates, like today, for example, or if I send, let's say, Joey, uh, an update, uh, with the rates where they're at. Or unlike the bank, uh, the pools have to be a hundred transparent, uh, with their rates. So you could actually go online and see the rate at school every single day for the past thirty years. Um, and every time, as I mentioned, if I quote the rate or if you guys see it online, that actually gets the net of those six basis points.
Okay, okay, thank you. Can you have a question? Alright, so again, if this is something that we are interested in, or at least we have information, then we can take it back to those particular boards. And then that will be determined by their boards, if they want to look forward and things of that nature. This is just informational stuff to see how we can continue to, to make our money work for us instead of just sitting there in our regular account, not doing anything, so. Thank you so much, we'll be getting back to.
Thank you.
If, if, of course, if any other questions come up, we can reach out, uh, like I said, I'm usually, no, I think Stan Mark is, uh, living plain, I'm fairly close by y'all. Um, but again, thank you guys so, so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about the technical details, we work together, can't move back up plan real quick, we're tired of it. Okay, item number seven. Consider discussing active contract for administrative services for Mallard Park, Jake Adams with Public Management, you're going to explain the details? See here? No? He's not here, okay. Well, just aside from that little note there, um, people that are new on the, uh, council. May not understand or may not know where Mallard, Mallard Park is. Yeah, I'm getting this, I'm thinking this is where it's at, it's down here beside Paradise Estates, there's that portion of land between there and the, the bridge.
I don't know how bottom.
The bottom, okay, I don't know how far back it goes, do you know how many acres it is?
Goes to creek, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's, uh.
I mean, it goes here, but how deep?
So it's really.
Yeah, it's in your point of view.
It's just, yeah, so it's, it's just that far back or is it going further, I don't know.
Hell, I drew that up.
Yeah, I know, I just don't, at least I know you did.
Yeah, I know.
I don't have it in front of me, I have too many numbers in the brain. I can.
My concern about, uh, about that area is just the floodplain. It's because the water. But the water always gets out so bad.
Different types of parks. That's just to give.
Not being able to be acted on this, we're prepared, maybe she's got general information right now. Trying.
Oh, you're good.
When you say park, what, what is that? Just the walking trails and that kind of thing, or the play equipment, like what?
Yeah, to be saying.
Well, we actually sent out a survey a few years ago. To see what people were most interested in.
Okay.
They've been walking trail, walking, hiking trail. Um, like fishing ponds, exercise equipment, and like, that was the top five. Uh, that's what we had to send in for the grant. For the country, yeah.
And you don't choose a grant, is that a matching grant that we have to match with or just a regular, you know, the matching, do you recall? The other side?
I, I couldn't call it, I didn't. The, the plan that was set in place. I'm sorry, I don't have all the information for, was to get this grant and pay the matching funds with another grant that we did not receive.
So they're wanting to disrupt the park and play, but also manage it.
Yes.
No, we would exchange, yeah, we would have to have a book.
About forty acres total.
Is it in the floodplain?
Yeah, pretty.
Okay.
I mean, back to.
Well, he's telling that, probably driving down there, but. And it's all, it was actually. Yeah. Be a good use of.
It's a, these saples, two little frickin trees that they go back there.
I mean, it, it would be nice to have a park for people to have a go to instead of them. My concern is because it is right there by the creek. And you, and then it's, I, I know you like to have the trees and stuff to walk under, but I worry about the safety too. When it's creek, you have to, you know, to me, you almost have to have some sort of fence so that you can, you can go that far and then, I don't know.
Which grant did we not get?
We did not get. Callan County Open Spaces Grant.
We got the Parks and Wildlife.
Parks and Wildlife, this, that, this one. And we did not get the Callan County Open Spaces.
And how much was the one we have?
Do we have an alternative? For that, or?
Uh, I believe we can reapply for the Callan County Open Spaces Grant in another two years. That's usually, that's usually the lifespan that you're interested in every two years.
So if we don't act on this grant, we go within two years, it goes away, is that what you're saying?
Said to the one that we've already been awarded, where we lose it if we don't act on it at certain timeframe, I don't have any, I can find that, so you have to look at your grant.
Yeah, I have to look through it.
Cause you know, that would be.
Yeah.
And then that way you'd be able to tell us exactly how much we got.
Yeah. I will look at those.
And, and a curiosity, what do we come up with Mallard Park, the name Mallard is, because Joanne Franklin, if I'm not mistaken, donated that land. So why would we name something off of Joanne Franklin, the person who actually donated land?
If I remember correctly. She said it was because Mallard is the one who founded some of Blue Ridge, like the, the in-house survey that are, that everyone gone, that's, that's it. So.
I, I never, I never heard the name before, but I, you know, I knew that Joanne Franklin had put in the, the, oh, Paradise Estates town there and started that.
Yeah, and she donated.
In all honesty, I would think it being very well spent. If you, if you named something after the person donated land to, just to, that aside, someone who just, you know, we don't have clues. I agree, I mean, that's just, that's just nothing.
I mean, I can reach out to Ms. Franklin, she would be, she would be interested in it.
So this administration services. Are they going to help us get grants or what exactly?
No, they are going to manage this one particular. No, they are going to manage this one particular grant.
I mean, without the other grant, we can't use that. Is that correct?
Much. We'd be limited to what we could do.
We would be extremely limited because we don't have the funds.
Right.
We'd be limited because of the amount of the grants.
How much is the grant for?
Yeah, I have, sorry, I don't have that for me.
Well, and honestly, I agree with what was said earlier. I really don't see paying out someone to manage this if we're looking at hiring an administrator. He may have the ability to do this for us and keep that money. I mean, that's 35, what I was reading, it looked like about 35,000 plus for them to manage this for us.
Well, I haven't been able to show up tonight, so.
But that's a lot of money to hand to somebody if we're hiring someone that's half their salary, you know.
Close to.
The administrator's salary, so.
Thought they were going to be here to prevent it.
Well, that's not your fault.
I am very sorry.
That is not your fault.
Is there only agenda you contacted? Yeah, if you think they want to take you back, let you know, yes or no, but.
I didn't want it to go, you know, and it's in this, why put it on here, but.
And so, and do we also know how long since we were ordered that grant, how long we have before we, if they could take you back or how long we have to act on it? That would be another question that we would need to know.
She was going to look up. Yeah, so I have to look on that. I am, I am, I've got it in my notes. I am here to call first thing to your point.
I wouldn't waste my time looking if you have the information.
Yeah, I've got it made.
We need the information. Go ahead, get the information and I'm going to make a motion that we table this. And then we'll get all the information together, including the second grant, how long it will take, how long this grant is good for. This is something we need to move forward. We've got to have this. But we're not really ready for that. We don't have anything to, to manage right now.
Okay, so I have a motion by Keith Taylor out of Taylor Island and David's second on favor. And next item is executive session. In accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.001, the city council will set an executive session, closing to the sentence of following. A consultation with attorney on a matter whose duty of the attorney to the government of the body and the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct and state bar of Texas clear conflict with this chapter regarding one zoning permitting certificates, occupancy enforcement, Texas local government code, Chapter 2.12, the plans submitted and calibers, interlocal agreement with Collin County flat review, personnel managers to deliberate the appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, disciplines, or dismissal of a public officer or employee regarding city administrator or city secretary. So we will go into executive session at 7:53. Chapter 551, the city council will reconvene in the open session to consider action, if any, on matters discussed in executive session. And that will be at 8:58.
I would like to bring forward a resolution adopting a plat submittal calendar.
That is second, so good. On favor. Now we'll bring that forward to the next. That the only honorable, correct? Item number 10 is extension of placing addicts on future agendas. Twinkie, do you have anything?
I just want to read her TMZ appointments.
And then item number 11 is adjournment.
Motion returned.